Y'all ready? Order. We're gonna call the June 2025 meeting to order, and Commissioner Floyd's gonna do the invocation for it. Please stand.
All right, y'all pray with me. Dear Lord, thank you for this day, thank you for this opportunity to come together and do our little bit of work in our little corner of your kingdom. Let all decisions here be made in accordance with your will, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Y'all lead, uh, let me lead y'all on, I pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. We got a full house here tonight, glad to see everybody. I, uh, I needed approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with two changes. Remove County Attorney, item number two, from the original agenda, that issue was settled. Uh, and add executive session for the purpose of discussing, uh, litigation and real estate.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Okay. I need a, uh, motion for approval of the meeting, May 2025 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the May 2025 meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Okay.
Can we confirm that Commissioner Wallace is on the phone?
Yes.
Uh, yes, sir, I'm here.
All right, very good.
All right, we need a, uh, approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passed? All right. Community development items.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we close our regular meeting in a republic hearing.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
So, this first item, um, is the second reading for a rezoning, um, from PD Plan Development to A5 Agricultural for approximately twenty-five point oh-nine acres of property that is currently part of the Buckhead Development, and you can see the area highlighted there. Uh, the property is located off of Murphy Court and is accessed via driveway from that road, um, and is currently part of that Buckhead Development, but it has not been developed as currently a vacant piece of property. And you can see the driveway, that dirt driveway in that picture at the top there. Um, the maximum number of residential units have been reached within the Buckhead PD, so the applicant is requesting this rezoning in order to be able to use this property for residential and late agricultural use. It will also remove the property from the PD, and you can see the surrounding zoning there with that reddish color being the PD, and the other properties are zoned A5 adjacent. The applicant, um, did provide a concept plan you'll see here, showing up to two residences as well as a barn with living space above. Um, the applicant is proposing limiting the uses on this parcel to small farm animals, silviculture, residential, and related accessory uses and public utilities. Uh, staff is recommending further limiting this to exclude silviculture, major public utilities, and accessory uses and structures customary to conditional uses, says that this would prohibit more intensive uses that may add additional traffic, um, have other impacts on those adjacent residential properties. Engineering did also recommend that a portion of that currently dirt access be paved adjacent to Murphy Court, and the property will be served by well and septic. Portions of the stormwater drainage for the Buckhead PD are located on this parcel, so staff is also recommending an easement provided on these, um, to ensure that they will continue to be accessible and maintained. There is also a thirty-foot perimeter buffer, um, around the Buckhead PD, part of which is located on this property. Uh, the currently developed areas of the PD do have adequate open space, um, in most of the areas adjacent to this property that is owned by the HOA that can serve the purpose of the buffer. Um, the applicant also indicated they will not be disturbing the vegetation adjacent to the PD development. Staff did recommend, um, requiring that a buffer be shown on a boundary plat for this property prior to a building permit, just to ensure that that vegetation is maintained. Um, at the May meeting, PNC did recommend approval, apologize, with, um, the following conditions. Uh, the permitted uses shall be limited to the following: farm animals, small, detached single-family dwellings, accessory dwelling units, public utility services minor, accessory uses and structures not listed but customary to permitted uses, and home offices. Uh, the driveway shall be paved for fifty feet in conformance with the engineering design manual. This must be completed prior to a CO being issued for a building permit on the parcel. Easement shall be provided across the PD's stormwater facilities, um, per the engineering department's requirements and identified on a boundary plat to be reviewed by staff and recorded prior to issuance of a building permit, and undisturbed buffers a minimum of twenty feet on the property adjacent to lots on Castle Oak and Murphy Court shall be shown on a boundary plat to be reviewed by staff and recorded prior to issuance of a building permit. This is in addition to the thirty-foot perimeter buffer that will be located on the PD-zoned property, and I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
If you eliminate silviculture as a use and, say, some of it's damaged by hurricane, is there some recourse to salvage that?
Yeah, silviculture is just if you're harvesting for profit, those, those trees, that timber, so they could remove trees if needed.
Okay. That's all.
Anyone here to speak in for or against? Just state your name, please.
Good evening, Scott Allison with Coleman Company. Uh, Sarah did a great job explaining what our request is, and, um, in, in short, they're trying to put two houses on the lot with a barn with potential accessory dwelling above it, um, potentially be used as well for, you know, that she's an artist as well, maybe some painting, things like that. Um, all of the conditions that were recommended by staff and planning commission, we, we have no objection, and I can answer any questions that you have.
None here.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, item two is a second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for a property on Tony Branch Road. Uh, the applicant is requesting to rezone a point nine-eight acre property from the B1 neighborhood zoning to the B2 general commercial district, uh, in order to develop a liquor store and potential restaurant. This is at the corner of Tony Branch and Highway 204. Uh, at their meeting in May, planning and zoning did recommend denial of the rezoning request, and staff recommended approval with the conditions of the following: uses shall not be permitted, animal boarding, adult use, vehicle washing, funeral homes, motels, uh, shooting ranges, drive-throughs, uh, fireworks, local transit systems, bowling billiards, as well as any traffic improvements, the applicant would be responsible. Uh, so this request is on the north end of the county, and this shows you a location map here where it's on that northeast corner of 204 and Tony Branch, and this shows you that it's currently zoned B1 today by right, so the applicant is requesting to rezone to the B2, uh, zone i- in order to develop a liquor store, which is not permitted by right in the B1 zone. And this shows you the comprehensive plan, or the character area map, future land use map. This, uh, it falls on the fringe, so just to the south is that rural residential character area, it lies in the emerging suburban, but it's important to note that this is not at a crossroads intersection, so we wouldn't traditionally see commercial developments at this area, but it's also important to keep in mind that it is already zoned B1 today by right. Um, this shows you some existing pictures where the site today is just undeveloped. And this shows you, and set planned at its highest yield, it could be potentially a forty-seven-hundred square foot, uh, liquor store and/or restaurant, uh, and he's showing that he can meet all the buffering requirements and stuff required by the UDO. The applicant did complete a TDA that was approved by the County Engineering Department that showed it would generate an estimated two-hundred-and-fifty-nine trips per day, and this did not warrant any traffic improvements at this point. Um, so staff did recommend approval, uh, limiting all the more intense uses in the B2 zoning district. Uh, in your packet, you'll find a table of what's allowed in the B1 and the B2, uh, as well as if traffic improvements do become warranted during the civil construction process, the applicant should be responsible for all those costs associated, uh, and again, planning and zoning did recommend denial, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
So it's not an issue of, of footprint or size or anything like that, the sole reason for going B1 to B2 is the use?
It is the use. Now, he does get a little bit more flexibility when it comes to like lot coverage, and setbacks are a little less restrictive in the B2, but generally, I think the main issue was the use.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone here to speak for or against?
Good evening, my name is William Cunningham with Coleman Company. Um, as Brett stated before, we're looking to rezone to B2 in order to, um, implement a beer, wine, liquor store, um, and besides the use of, of zoning, um, as previously stated, to the side setbacks, as well as the impervious lot coverage, um, could play semi-crucial roles in this lot development. It's a little less than an acre, um, so that forty-seven-fifties, uh, building footprint that we have is really as much as you can get when you combine parking, um, stormwater drainage, and, um, the site plan that we provided ultimately is what it should come out to, um, but through the permitting process, you know, we don't know if that extra ten feet might come crucial, you know, to fit in that septic field to the side, or, you know, we're just not sure, so that would, you know, be a great benefit to this, um, site. Um, you know, for traffic, that was a huge concern that was raised at the last, um, public, uh, planning and zoning meeting, um, and frankly, the B1 to B2, you know, it's like currently entitled for commercial use, um, the TDA came out to a AM peak of eleven trips and a PM, uh, peak of thirty-one trips, so, um, you know, as I said, by GDOT standards, they don't call for any road improvements, um, or any necessary, um, items like that, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The access will be off 204 or Tony Branch?
Uh, it'd be 204 onto Tony Branch, it'd be, it's a hundred-and-fifty feet up off of Tony Branch would be the, um, access into the property.
Okay.
Nothing on 204?
No, sir. No access off 204.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. So, hand raised? Come on up, just state your name.
Hi, uh, good evening, my name's Benjamin Hutchinson. I live at, uh, seventeen ninety-one Tony Branch, which is the house directly adjacent on Tony Branch. That drive would be about fifteen feet from my current driveway. Um, first, I'd like to address the traffic, there will absolutely be traffic slowdowns there, as it is people turning off of Tony Branch, or excuse me, off of 204 onto Tony Branch, they hit it like a racetrack. They turn off and they're doing sixty by the time they get past my front yard in a forty-five. So now you're gonna tell me people are gonna be pulling in, slowing down to turn in there while someone else is running up their rear, we're gonna have a backup onto 204 for sure. Um, on top of that, we don't need a liquor store. We have one, we have two down the road, eight minutes from me, one is Mike's, I can get there and back before it's dinner is over. The other one is down the road by sixteen, they just put it in, what, five months ago? Um, we don't need extra people hanging out. Also, I believe five, six years ago, they came in here asking for variances on that lot because they couldn't fit what they wanted. They just came back, said that, oh, B2 will give us more space, but he literally just said, we're not sure, we might need to come back for ten feet extra variances. So now you're gonna take a B2 and encroach on our properties on the edges even more with variances when they come back and ask for more? Doesn't seem fair to the homeowners in the area. We don't need the lois and the light pollution, we don't need the extra trash coming in there. You know, this is a neighborhood, there are no businesses within three, four minutes of there, there's a church and there's homes. Then there is the little zip-in Dollar General area, and then it's more rural again. It does not fit for our community, we don't want it, we don't need it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Just state your name, please.
My name's Bob Hastings, I live catty-corner to where this proposed, um, liquor store is going, and anybody knows the history of that area, any wreck that happens in that intersection ends up either in my yard or in my house. On the second note, um, I went to this, I went to the first meeting and did exactly what I did, um, when I found out this meeting was coming up, I tried to call my county commissioner thirty-one times, he won't answer his phone, so here I am. We don't need, uh, we don't need a bunch of people standing around, begging for change like do a mile down the road, we don't need that in our neighborhood. We don't need the traffic, we don't need the crime increase, we just, we don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name's Corey, he's, yeah, live at the lot adjacent to the lot they're wanting to do. Uh, I agree with everything Benjamin, Mr. Bob said there, uh, liquor store, not a good fair area, crime, everything else, pretty much that they covered. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, anyone else?
State your name. Uh, I live probably, I, I live on 204, probably about fifteen-hundred feet from the intersection, uh, I agree with everything they've said, I mean, it's a bit busy intersection, it's an offset intersection, so that makes it worse. The traffic is bad there, uh, we have young kids in the neighborhood, I mean, we don't need the extra traffic, especially a liquor store, or any, any other kind of business, really, not, not right there on that intersection.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I guess that's it for that.
The next item is a conditional use permit for a home service business, um, to be located at three fourteen River Bend, and you can see the location highlighted here, and then closer up, um, on there, and here you'll see an image sort of coming into the house in an overview. Uh, the applicant's proposing a one-person hair salon in an R-15 zone property, um, to be operated out of an accessory building that they have not constructed yet. Um, the approximate location on the right, you'll see sort of right behind the house, um, is where they're thinking of doing it, and they have spoken to that neighbor you can see there. Um, the salon is proposed to operate during school hours from Monday to Friday, um, which is approximately three to four hours a day, with clients parking in their existing driveway. Um, and as you can see, the surrounding properties are zoned R-15 as well in that neighborhood. Planning and zoning did recommend approval of the conditional use, as did staff. Um, we have received several public comments against the use, um, which we have provided for you as well, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Any question? Okay, thank you. Anybody in the audience, uh, for or against?
Yes.
If you'd come up and state your name, I know there's a lot of y'all here, if y'all were kinda, you know, if you all gonna say the same thing, uh, I'd appreciate it if y'all just keep it to a minimum.
Okay. I might not be the best spokesperson for that, but, yeah, I'm first, but I might not be right. Um, I live at five hundred River Bend, um, I'm against an accessory building of any kind. Um, we have a, a, uh, deal in our neighborhood, basically, that there are to be no accessory buildings, no businesses, a, a covenants, that everyone has agreed to in the neighborhood. There's probably about eighty houses in the neighborhood, and, um, the covenant says, basically, that there's to be no accessory buildings, clearly says there's to be no businesses within the neighborhood, and, you know, it's just gonna open up a can of worms for everybody dragging their businesses home as far as lawn care people, food truck folks, and before you know it, it, it's gonna be, you know, it's going to be, um, an operating, uh, outdoor mall, in my opinion, and who needs, who needs the, you know, the additional parking and people coming and going from the neighborhood, and, you know, it's all clearly stated in the covenances that what is and what is not to be, and it's just outrageous that this has even gone this far, in my opinion. So, I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, sir.
I'm sure that a lot of people have the same thing to say.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is John Block, I live at, uh, two thirty-seven River Bend Road, uh, and I am in, within one thousand feet of the, uh, property in question. Uh, I'd like to start by first presenting, uh, the board with a petition. This petition is signed by forty-seven members of Cove Homeowners Association. They have one. Those forty-seven signatures, gentlemen, represent, of the sixty-three households in the Cove, uh, they represent thirty-six of them, over half of the households in the Cove. Everyone, those signatures, this is a petition against, uh, the establishing a, uh, beauty salon, okay? And the reasons for this, there are several of them, uh, we have concerns, concerns that have not been yet addressed. We don't know about any environmental impact that a salon might have, even if it's very slight. Uh, the Cove has, uh, septic systems, and God only knows, um, the problems I've had with septic, but we don't know what's going in the septic system, we don't know what's going into our ground, excuse me. All of our water is on well, and, uh, it comes from the water table, so we don't know if any impact study has been done, it might be slight, it might be none, but we don't know. We also don't know how much electricity is gonna be used, where's the garbage gonna be dumped? Does the, uh, garbage company know that they're picking up for a business now? They don't. The covenant has already been addressed, it's clearly stated in, uh, Article Six, Section Six, no businesses in the Cove. As examples, it explicitly says beauty salons. We have already decided long ago that, uh, we don't want a beauty salon in this neighborhood. Times change, maybe we do want one now, I don't know, but it hasn't been discussed. And what happened was, um, when I got notice from the county that they were gonna have these meetings, I addressed it, one, to our president through a text message, I received no answer, forty-eight hours. I posted it on a Facebook page, received no answer, until the night before, when a member of the board, who is not the president, said that they made a decision to allow this, with no discussion, no knowledge, and after I posted it, several of these people saw it for the first time. That's unacceptable. Right now, we're asking you not to approve this. We can state all the things we don't want in the neighborhood, but what we do want is good governance, we're not getting that. We have not had a chance to discuss this as neighbors. We have a rogue member on the board who sat on my porch last week, and told me he looks at HOA rules like he looks at Army doctrine, suggestions. Now, I'm twenty-five years military, and that's a big joke in the Army, doctrine, that's a suggestion. It's really not. It's the way you train, it's the way you fight, when you have to deviate from doctrine, it's for reason. He deviated from doctrine with no reason. On top of that, we have a president who abdicated his authority to this rogue member. We need to clean that up. Excuse me. I've been in court all day.
Yes, sir. And, sir, just to clarify, we are not here to legislate your HOA from this day, as I understand that, and I appreciate your, your passion.
And, uh, excuse me, um, and I ask you, we've done our legal research, our board is open to liability, okay? They don't know that, but I have it here. What I'm asking the board to do is not approve it. If, uh, if our neighbors wanna come back later and ask the board to approve it, after we've had a chance to clean up our, our mess, that's fine, but let us fix this, let's talk as neighbors.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next.
My name's Donna Hope, I've lived in the Cove since nineteen eighty-eight. It's been a safe neighborhood for us to raise our children, who are all gone now, we have, um, six grandchildren that come and visit, those roads have been safe, it's been a quiet neighborhood, that's why we built there. why we built there. And like he said, like John said, the covenants protected that environment. We have a lot of wildlife there that we enjoy, and, you know, right now, my house is at one sixty-three, and we're kind of on the straightaway that goes between River Oaks and the Cove. And that straightaway already is violated sometimes with cars just thinking that's, you know, the way to zip on by, over the speed limit. But, you know, I'd like it to remain a quiet neighborhood without having a lot of extra vehicles coming in and out. And I do know that the said business in question says they're not gonna be open when school is not, is not in session, but that also was brought forward at the zoning meeting, that it would be open in the summer. I can't see people giving up their clients during, you know, holidays and, and summertime, you know? So I just, you know, don't want that increased traffic in the neighborhood. It's also in a flood zone, the A.E. flood hazard zone, so I don't know what the specifics on the structure being built is, but, you know, I don't know what violations there might be there, or if it'll be in line with that. But, and then the septic tank, the chemicals gone into the river, because it's right there on the river. I don't know, I thought about talking to the riverkeepers about that, but I'm really concerned about the environmental impact on our, our wildlife and our safety for our children and grandchildren in the neighborhood. We do have a lot of young families moving in now, so they're out on their bikes, they're, you know, on their scooters, they're everywhere, you know, children playing. So I would really like to maintain that safe neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Lisa Wallace. I live at five twenty Riverbend, no relation to Dr. Gene Wallace. I am not in favor of this business going forward and being allowed. Ordinarily, I'm all for people providing for their families with extra hobbies, but when it comes to inviting more people and traffic into the neighborhood is where I draw the line. There are lots of chairs in Richmond Hill that can be rented, where she could cut hair and style, if, if that's what she wants to do. But in, in generally speaking, I think John's comments about our board just showed that we weren't given the chance as neighbors to discuss it amongst ourselves. And my concern is that, once you open the door to allow one business, as small as this one is, we al, we also have another beautician, cosmetologist in the neighborhood. If she, there's no reason that she could not therefore, you know, apply for a license as well. She may, she is, like, once you get this, she is allowed to schedule as many as she can schedule in her time, and cars can go in her driveway. She's permitted to have a two-foot square sign in her yard, okay? So where does the board then draw the line, if they're permitted to act that way? And then you're put in the position of, well, who do we grant these licenses to, and who do we not? It puts you in a discriminatory function. So that's another reason I don't want to see our quiet, quiet, peaceful neighborhood that's lovely, to become a place where people have their home businesses, where clients are coming and going. And I know that we have had one in the past that was at the corner of our Riverbend, and it was, his clients only came once a week to collect their paychecks, okay? But there were probably twenty of them. And I had small children, and the number of grown men that I had to stop and ask not to run over my children and my neighbors' children was ridiculous. I didn't enjoy it, and I'm certain this business would not have that kind of clientele. But, like I said, it opens the door for other businesses to be allowed to operate. So that's why I oppose.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Jared Anderson. Where do I start? One, I'd like to see that petition. I never saw it. No one ever knocked on our door, told us anything about it until tonight. Two, I can kind of tell you that a lot of this probably would have been squashed had people come and talked to me. These people that are up here tonight, first time I've seen them, complained about this. I mean, it's on Facebook. My wife is trying to stay off Facebooks because everything's said. But it probably could have, you know, not taken your guys' time. Electricity, garbage, I'm paying the electric bill. You know, the garbage, if, if you know anything about salons, this is a one-person salon. She does not want to do it as a full-fledged salon. She's doing it as a hobby. Unfortunately, the Arkansas Cosmetology Board says you can't have a salon as a hobby. You have to have a business. It's the only reason we're going through this, and I'm trying to do it the right way. Trying to get the conditional use permit. We still have to get building permits. We would still have to have the environmental permits. We would still have to go through the cosmetology board and have them approve it. And so the concerns that they're bringing up, environmental garbage, electricity, I mean, I don't understand why anybody's worried about what electric bill I'm paying. About my family, my wife and I moved here with our three kids, sixteen, nine, and seven. So all these people talking about kids, I'm right there. I know. This is by appointment only. This is no advertisement. We are not gonna have a sign out front. We have made sure you're not gonna see the building. Our neighbors have a structure that's a poolhouse. The intention of this building was gonna be a poolhouse. We were gonna put the salon underneath our screened-in porch. However, we had a elevation certificate completed, and said we couldn't do it, so we had to shift. So we will be the ten feet above the waterline. Again, this is all stuff that has to go through building code. As far as the HOA, I'm gonna let them argue that out. I went to the HOA, asked permission. They gave me permission. I don't, I didn't vote in that. I am on the HOA board, but I did not vote. I just asked permission. I don't know. I think this is kind of silly. I've never been in an HOA before. I've never been in a place. I had the same kind of thing in Arkansas where we moved from, had a salon on our property. One car a day is not traffic. I mean, we've got more lawnmowers coming to our property, on our, on the Cove than one a day. So I, I don't know where the threat from one car parking in our driveway. My daughter's sixteen. Her friends are over my house. They will, no one will be able to tell the difference between my daughter having friends over, or my wife cutting someone's hair. And the school hours thing, it is, it's nine to three. She does not want to work when our kids are at home. She will not work in the evening. She will not work on the weekends when I'm home. In the summer, yeah, she probably will do some. Because like I said, you don't want to just, you know, let your client's hair get out of control, which is why we said school hours, not school days. But we're not gonna be doing it at five o'clock at night, when everybody's kids are back home from school, stuff like that. So, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, I mean, this isn't our first time doing something like this, as far as building a salon on our property. The other one was septic. We had no issues with the septic. Of course, if the building permits require us to get it checked out, I'm fine with it.
All right. Thanks, sir. Any, any questions, or?
I'm good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. How are you? I'm the currently elected vice president for the Cove. I'd like to start out by saying, Mr. Block, sir, I don't appreciate you calling me a rogue. I walked my wife in here and shook your hand, but that's good, because, sir, that's precedent. That's exactly, yes, sir, that's exactly what's going on in our neighborhood right now. That behavior, that characteristic of certain individuals who are attacking people who move into our neighborhood. What's... We had an Asian couple, family move in, they were attacked. Mr. Anderson and his family moved in, they were attacked.
Please, sir, we're gonna keep it to this issue.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Right in there, no businesses allowed.
Guys.
I moved in there twenty-five years ago.
Sir.
The covenant says no businesses allowed, sir. Sorry.
Inside the Cove, there's, it's a one-mile loop. There's sixty-four, there's sixty-four lots inside our, inside our neighborhood. Yesterday, I counted vehicles coming into our neighborhood in front of my home. In the, in the Cove, I want to present all facts. Inside the Cove, in front of my home, my house is midway down one of the streets. Nine vehicles came into the neighborhood between the hours of nine a.m. and three p.m., one of which was the mailman, and two of which are, is a resident who came in and out, which leaves six outstanding vehicles. My math, that's one vehicle per hour. Excessive traffic inside the Cove. The only time the traffic gets excessive is in the afternoons, when they deliveries and stuff like that. So I'd like to stick with the facts here. A lot of this stuff is hearsay. Also, inside the covenants, it's vaguely written, it was written in the eighties. There's a lot left to be interpreted, which actually makes our neighborhood really unique, in a sense. It's not super strict. And if you walk around, just about every home is in violation of the covenants. It is, my understanding, and the board's understanding, is unlawful to selectively enforce portions of the board, or portions of the covenants, for some, and not all. And you'll see anything from mechanic work in front of a home, to dogs walking without a leash, the, the whole nine yards, all of it. Fences are supposed to be four foot, but you'll see some that are six and eight. There's been exceptions. Trailers in parks, I'm sorry, trailers and boats parked next to homes. These things were decided by the board without resolution of the community. It was made by the board to let these things happen. That's no different than what we're doing today. What we've done is, we did not let a beauty shop into our neighborhood. We let a single-chair salon. We made a decision on that. And based on the evidence and, and the, and the, and the numbers that Mr. Jared and his family provided us, it takes approximately three to four hours to do hair. That means there's two vehicles or two customers, if you will, a day. And so, within six hours, you're looking at maybe two, tops three vehicles, max. Also in that same setting, when it comes to community, I understand Bryan County's trying to build community here and really establish some stuff moving forward. And I, I can't help but think of the image of, like, still magnolias, where the, where the ladies are just sitting down discussing with each other. But unfortunately, we don't have that in our neighborhood, obviously. There's a cut line right now, unfortunately, with some of the newer folks coming in, and their interpretation of certain things and the others. But however, the face of our board is Mr. Green. And we make sure that happened, that we also reserve respect for the folks that become, that came before us in the neighborhood. We too moved into the neighborhood for the same sanctuary that they did. And we are working, and we will preserve that in our neighborhood, by all means.
All right, sir.
So what the board did was, we looked at the covenants, and we've made our own interpretation, just like they, just like they did. That's good.
All right, sir, we appreciate your time. If you can close.
Yes, sir. Also, your petition, the board was not, was not given that petition, so we could, we did not validate those signatures. So we don't know who signed that petition. We don't know if they went outside the neighborhood. We don't know if they, it was forged. We were not provided, we were not provided a copy of that petition. The petition is also erroneous, because it negated, it negated facts that were particular to the one-chair hair salon. They said beauty shop. Well, beauty shop does hair, nails, and skin, and sells products. We allowed, and we authorize a one-chair hair salon.
All right.
The other thing, yes, sir, is that?
Yeah, if, if you can close, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'll be really quick, so I know you've listened to a lot.
What's your name, ma'am?
My name is Amy Davis, and I live in the house directly across from the proposed hair salon. I spoke earlier on the phone with Al that was just up here. He did not want to have a group meeting to discuss this, as I suggested. He wanted to do a one-on-one phone call. That didn't go well. Al has a different version of, of what the facts are here. I don't really care about the drama in the neighborhood, or what happened years ago. I'm only reacting to this as, I'm a homeowner, and my husband and I moved there like three years ago, and we are invested in the community, and we, we chose this neighborhood because it was quiet. I never even dreamed, like, driving here, it's even ridiculous to me that we are considering a hair salon in my neighborhood. It's just, it just seems like something that we shouldn't even discuss. I'm not, you know, the petition, I wasn't home, my husband did sign it. I wish I had the opportunity to sign it. I'm sure they didn't take it to Jared's house, because of course he wants it. So I really am against this, and I hope that you all make the right decision.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, or somebody else here, hold on.
Good afternoon. My name is Marina Portus, and I live at eight three five Sterling Road. I just want to say, I'm really, I'm for this salon. I, I have two children in the neighborhood. My two children are probably two of the only children that have been outside in the neighborhood, and I feel that it's safe. Looking at the picture of their driveway, you're not gonna see the cars. We have businesses in the neighborhood. We had a board member run us second chance sports out of their garage. That increased traffic. We have people who work on cars in our neighborhood. We have, I believe in the covenants, it says that you can do general maintenance on your vehicles. We have people rebuilding engines in their driveway. Dogs walking without a leash. There are a lot of things in our neighborhood that are not following the covenants to the T that were written in the eighties, and I am for this. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Fay. I live in the Cove. I've been there for about thirty years. I don't have an issue with the size of the business. My issue is that if you permit one business, then you must permit almost any other business. And that there's a good reason to sue the homeowners association to permit another business, a nail salon, or a donut shop, or whatever you want to have in the neighborhood. If there is already a precedent for a legal business in residential neighborhood, what's to stop it from having more?
All right, thank you. All right, move.
My name is Robin Vauso, and I live at fifty Cove's Way, which is just down still on Sterling, but just keep going, or Riverbend, but just go straight down. Also, on the river. My concern also is the fact that this is a business. It doesn't matter what kind of business. It is a business. And once you allow any business in there, you do set a precedent. So legally, I don't see how you could stop. And we are a covenant-protected neighborhood. And for the sixty-some-odd families that moved into this protected neighborhood, whether or not people don't follow the covenants and allow their dogs not on a leash, or whatever you want to say, or they have a fence that doesn't fit the guidelines, or whatever, w, once you allow this kind of business in the neighborhood, then you've opened up this doorway, and there's no way to go back, and you're going to have a lot of trouble. And to be a covenant-protected neighborhood, for those that should have come to all the neighbors, and we should have had a vote on it, and two-thirds of the neighborhood should have voted to change the covenant and say, yes, we are for this, and let's change the covenant and allow this type of business to come into our neighborhood. That wasn't the discussion. It wasn't put out to the people. And if this was, if you are concerned about your community, that's what should have happened. We are a community, and we are all together in this, and we were left out. We were totally left out, and now it's turned around. It's not a business within a house. Now it's a standalone business. Let's, let's build it up along the river. And now you've got a hair salon, not a beauty salon, a hair salon, or whatever you want to call it, and where is that, where is all that, you know, product dumping into the river? You know, you, do you not have to worry about that? Where's all this soap and whatever she's using? I just think that this is a, this is a whole can of worms. I don't think we should be opening.
Thank you for your...
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, commissioners. Item number four is a second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for property at twenty-seven-hundred Billfutcher Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone a one-point-five-nine acre portion of a larger property from the A-five agricultural to the RR one-point-five rural residential. The applicant just plans to subdivide the existing home from the rest of the property. Planning and zoning did recommend approval of the rezoning as did staff. So this is on the north end of the county, on Billfutcher Road, very close to the Bullock County line. You can see the location overview maps here. And then you can see the current zoning map, how it's surrounded with that RR one-point-five and A-five zonings, as well as the character area map, putting it in that emerging suburban character area. But due to the lack of infrastructure, the zoning is supported by the comprehensive plan. And this just shows you some general site pictures of the existing house, as well as the field that will remain that has the cows in the top right corner. And this shows you the proposed subdivision. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
No, I'm good.
Any question? Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone here speaking in favor or against? All right, moving on to number five.
So this last item is a public hearing for an alcohol beverage license. The applicant is DNK of Georgia LLC. The owner and manager is Kimlesh Kumar Patel. He has purchased the existing sixty-seven Liquor Store, which is located on Highway sixty-seven in North Bryan County, heading towards Bullock County. He has taken over this business and has applied for the required alcohol license in order to permit the package sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption. As staff has reviewed his application materials and has found everything to be in order, therefore, we are recommending approval.
Thank you.
Good? Okay. Anyone here speak for or against? All right, now we're...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close our public hearing and re-enter our regular meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passed. Now we're down to the...
You can go back and vote.
Yeah. We're going to vote on the first reading, or the Coleman Company, representing Karen
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the rezoning of parcel zero-six-one-dash-zero-six-six-dash-zero-three from PD Plan Development District to A-five Agricultural Zoning District with the following conditions. The permitted uses shall be limited to the following: farm animals, small detached single-family dwelling, accessory dwelling unit, public utility services minor, accessory uses and structures not listed but customary to permitted uses, home office. Number two, the driveway shall be paved for fifty feet in conformance with the engineering design manual. This must be completed prior to a CO being issued for a building permit on the parcel. Number three, easements shall be provided across the PD Stormwater Facilities per the Engineering Department's requirements and identified on a boundary plat to be reviewed by staff and recorded prior to issuance of a building permit. Number four, undisturbed buffers of a minimum, a minimum of twenty feet on the property adjacent to lots on Castle Oak and Murphy Court shall be shown on a boundary plat to be reviewed by staff and recorded prior to issuance of a building permit. This is in addition to the thirty-foot perimeter buffer located on the PD property.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right. Motion carried.
Commissioner Wallace, if you could say that again, it came through kind of hating.
Yeah, I think we got pretty good time delay, but I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay. All right, motion passed. Moving on, Scott Allison Company, representing Zia Investments. I need a motion, a second, I mean, a motion to approve, deny, or table.
I move to approve the requested rezoning of parcel zero-two-six-three-dash-zero-zero-nine-dash-zero-one with the following conditions. The following uses shall not be permitted: animal boarding, adult uses, vehicle washing facilities, funeral home, mortuary areas, hotel, motel, shooting ranges, drive-through restaurants, fireworks sales, local transit systems, bowling, billiards, and pool. If any traffic improvements become warranted during the civil construction plan process, the applicant shall be responsible for all costs associated with any necessary improvements.
Need a second? Okay, all in favor?
I got, I got one question. For Mr. Cunningham, or Scott, either one. Somebody brought up lighting, light pollution. It is a very dark intersection.
Yes, sir.
Is there some way that lighting is measured, where it doesn't interfere with intersection or affect adjacent properties? How is lighting regulated?
I can't speak to the exact specifics, but I know that it'll conform with the Unified Development Ordinance to make sure that light pollution doesn't enter the street and cause any more interference with traffic patterns or anything at night.
Does that sound right, Steph? All right, thank you.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, number three. Mr. Anderson, I need a motion to approve, deny, or table.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I move to deny the conditional use permit of parcel oh-six-one-oh-six-oh-one-oh-one-two for the operation of a one-person salon.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion is denied. Moving on, number four. Trey Hewitt, representing Sean Page, for a second reading of an ordinance to amend zoning map, parcel oh-two-four-oh-one-two.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the rezoning of parcel zero-two-four-oh-one-two from the A-five Agricultural Zoning District to the RR one-point-five Rural Residential Zoning District.
A second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, number five. DNK of Georgia, new alcohol license for parcel number oh-oh-seven-dash-oh-one-seventy.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the application for an alcoholic beverage license to permit the package sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption for Kimlesh Kumar Patel, DNK of Georgia LLC, doing business at sixty-seven Liquor Store.
A second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, motion carries. All right.
Y'all want to give everybody a two-minute recess if they want to, unless they want to stay for the rest of the meeting.
If anybody would like to leave, is welcome to.
Yeah. All right, community development, non-public hearing items.
Thank you. The first non-public hearing item, this is a first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for property at one-forty-four and Belfast River Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone a three-point-eight acre parcel from the A-five Agricultural to the B-two General Commercial Zoning District. This is just a first reading only, so no official action will be taken tonight. This will go to planning and zoning next week, and we'll be back before the Board of Commissioners in July for a decision. And this is just across from here at the roundabout, and this shows you an overview map, and this shows you the proposed concept. And I can answer any questions you may have.
No, no questions here.
If y'all are going out, please. All right, no question? All right, thank you.
And non-public hearing, item number two, this is another first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for a property on Wildwood Church Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone a two-point-five acre portion of a ten-acre property from the RR two-point-five to the A-five Agricultural District. The applicant just plans to complete a lotline adjustment. And again, this is just a first reading. It will go to planning and zoning next week on June the seventeenth, and we'll be back for you for a decision in July. And this shows you the overview and location maps here. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Good evening. This is a resolution in support of the Safe Streets for All Grant application, which is being, we are applying for in order to create an action plan, as known as a Vision Zero Action Plan. And as a reminder, it's not a traffic study, it's a plan that has a specific goal of reducing or eliminating fatalities and serious injuries for all road users. And the total requested will be three hundred thousand dollars, which we came to based on several meetings with consultants who have done similar plans. We do have a twenty percent local match required, which is a total of sixty thousand. We are applying with the cities of Pembroke and Richmond Hill. The match can be in-kind or monetary, and will be split with the county contributing fifty-six-point-five percent, Richmond Hill thirty-five percent, and Pembroke eight-point-five percent. This resolution does also approve the county as the lead applicant to supplement the matching funds if either city chooses not to participate. And staff is recommending approval of this resolution, authorizing the submittal of that grant application, and committing the required matching funds. And I can answer any questions.
So the city doesn't agree?
Pembroke has the signed resolution, and Richmond Hill's in the process of getting theirs approved by their council.
When do we expect that?
They are hoping by the end of this month. It's not required for the application, so at the latest, they said beginning of July, but we're hoping by the end of the month.
If, if you don't have concurrence, we just lower our ask?
So we did talk to a consultant about that, and they said the price will be the same, even without the city, because of the type of work that's required. It's pretty similar.
Okay. Thank you.
And we do need a vote on that, as a reminder.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a resolution authorizing the submittal of the SS forty-eight grant application from committing the required matching funds.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carried.
Item one on the agenda is the consideration of the Emergency Operations Plan. Emergency Operations Plan is a comprehensive document that outlines how a community organization will respond to that and to recover from emergencies and disasters. The EOP, or the Emergency Operations Plan, covers various types of incidents, such as natural disasters, accidents, and public health emergencies. This is a substantial update to the previous Emergency Operations Plan, and our Bryan County Emergency Management Agency Director, Ally Paget, has put this together along with her staff, and they're asking that she review and consider this EOP, or Emergency Operations Plan, for approval.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and adopt the Emergency Operations Plan as presented.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Item two is a consideration of a lease agreement with Caterpillar. Our previous lease on the Motograder ended December, and staff solicited quotes from new Motograder from local vendors that also hold Sourcewell contracts. Yancey Caterpillar returned the lowest quote for mentioned Motograder with a five-year lease, seven-hundred, seven-thousand-five-hundred-hour lease, with option of purchase at the end of that period. And our staff recommends executing that five-year, seven-thousand-five-hundred-hour lease agreement with Yancey Caterpillar for that Motograder.
Caterpillar.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize staff to execute a five-year, seventy-five-hundred-hour lease with CAT for one-hundred-fifty-three-thousand-eight-hundred, with an option of annual payments of sixty-three-thousand-two-hundred, and that was Yancey Caterpillar.
Yancey, yes, sir.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Second up is a consideration of equipment lease agreement with Yancey Caterpillar. This was two new excavators, same situation. The previous excavators, the lease purchase ran out. We chose not to buy those, but buy new. And Yancey Caterpillar returned the lowest quote for those leases on two hydraulic excavators. Staff recommends executing that, the two five-year, five-thousand-hour leases with Yancey Caterpillar for those two excavators.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize staff to execute two five-year, five-thousand-hour leases with CAT for ninety-four-thousand-nine-hundred-dollar purchase option, and five annual payments of forty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars.
Second. All right, all in favor? Raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay. Motion carried.
Commissioner Wallace, can you voice your vote, please?
Yes, in favor. Most of my hand also, you just can't.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And those will be paid, that's TSPLOS funds, it funds, that's a public works capital budget. Item four is the consideration of a lease agreement for two pumper trucks. These are two pumper trucks we ordered two years ago. They are finished, custom-made. This is a lease purchase agreement with Magnolia Bank for six-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and for a period of ten years. Staff's recommendation is authorize Chairman County Attorney or County Administrator execute and process a resolution paperwork needed to execute the lease purchase with Magnolia Bank for these two fire pumper trucks.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the Chairman County Attorney and or County Administrator to execute and process any documentation needed to execute the lease purchase with Magnolia Bank in the amount of six-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand, six-hundred-ninety-seven-seven-hundred, six-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Second. All right, all in favor? Raise your right hand. Commissioner Wallace? Ah, okay. Motion carried.
And that would be a SPOS purchase there. Item five is consideration of the award of technology installation to refurbish the mobile command center, as we call the Blackhawk vehicle. Bryan County received a grant totaling one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars from the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland and Security Agency. Multiple staff participated on this grant. This total grant be utilized to refurbish the technology in the mobile command vehicle, and also some other refurbishment. This, staff conducted a RFP for this task, and IP Access International LLC came back with the lowest bid, and they also demonstrated an ability to perform for the contract. And staff recommends the award of the contract of mounting of one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars to IP Access International for this refurbishing effort.
All right, need a motion.
That, that's on-site, right? They're coming here to do that work?
A lot of it will be done here, yes.
So will the Blackhawk be out of commission?
No, we anticipate the majority of it be done here, and it'd be in commission for hurricane season, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize staff to award a contract in the amount of one-hundred-thirty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars to IP Access International LLC for the technology refurbishment of the Blackhawk mobile command vehicle.
A second. All right, we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, no opposed? All right, motion carried.
Item six is an agreement with Georgia Power for the Highway eighty well, in conjunction with the destruction of the Bryan County Water Well number one, located on US Route eighty. It is necessary to enter into a distribution facility construction agreement with Georgia Power. Basically, they're running low power to supply the well with power. So, in accordance with the terms of the agreement, Bryan County shall reimburse Georgia Power for the cost of that installation, estimated to be at one-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars. This is going to be paid from grant funds that were received from Bryan County for this particular water and wastewater project.
All right. Need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a resolution authorizing payment in the amount of one-hundred-and-two-thousand to Georgia Power, and authorize staff to execute all documents necessary to complete the project.
Second. All right, we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carry.
Commissioner Price, I didn't, I saw the one, but I didn't see the other three.
Commissioner Price, I didn't, I saw the one, but I didn't see the other three.
In favor?
In favor, yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Mr. Wallace?
I can't see his hand.
Yeah, I can't see his hand either. Can you look for us, Mr. Wallace?
Yes, sir. I am in favor of the motion.
Thank you.
I raised my hand also.
All right, Commissioners, item seven is the approval of a Georgia Department of Corrections Work Detail Agreement. It's actually two agreements. One is for Public Works, which is two work detail with a maximum of ten offenders under the supervision of one full-time correctional officers for work four days a week with the Bryan County Public Works Department. The work detail will be composed of two men's details out of Long County. The total cost of the contract is not to exceed one hundred eight thousand five hundred dollars for a period of July one, 2025, to June thirtieth, 2026. Services will be billed monthly for actual work days on the daily cost of two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-five cents per detail day used. The second agreement is one for Parks and Recreation Maintenance. Similar, it's a women's detail out of the Women's Probation Detention Center. It is just one detail, ten offenders under one full-time correctional officer, and the not-to-exceed cost of that contract is fifty-four thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Same period of work for July one, 2025, to June thirtieth, 2026. Services billed monthly, same daily rate. Funding for all three work details was included in the 2025 budget. Staff recommends that the board authorize the county administrator to execute the work detail agreements with the Georgia Department of Corrections for two public works details and one recreation maintenance detail.
Can I ask a question on that, as far as Bryan County Sheriff's Department? Do they not offer that, that we could use? No?
No.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Or is that just real?
This is not a public comment period. You can ask questions during the public comments at the end, though.
Second, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, we need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the county administrator to execute work detail agreements with the Georgia Department of Corrections for Public Works and Parks and Recreation Maintenance Details.
Second.
All right, we got a second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Motion carried.
Item number eight is Transportation Improvement Contribution Agreement with J.I. Interstate West LLC. Bryan County and J.I. West Interstate Land LLC entered into a road improvement bond agreement on November twentieth, 2023. The J.I. Interstate agreed to post a performance bond for certain potential road improvements to Old Kyler Road. The bond agreement contemplated terminating the bond agreement and releasing the performance bond once certain transportation studies were completed, and J.I. Interstate's proportionate share to mitigate the impacts to the county's regional transportation system was established. The transportation study has been completed, and the county determined J.I. Interstate's proportionate share is four hundred thousand dollars. Upon approval and execution of the Transportation Improvement Contribution Agreement, the bond agreement will terminate, and the performance bond will be replaced by the cash contribution. Staff recommends the board approve the J.I. Interstate West Land LLC Transportation Improvement Contribution Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the J.I. Interstate West Land LLC Transportation Improvement Contribution Agreement as presented.
Second.
All right, motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Item number nine is the awarding of a debris removal service contract. On April fifteenth, 2025, staff issued a request for qualifications for debris removal services for disaster recovery. Qualification packages were due on Thursday, May twenty-second, 2025, and at that time, a total of six packages were received. The six qualification packages received were scored and reviewed by a committee with the results on the screen. After a thorough review of the packages submitted, DRC Emergency Services LLC received the highest score and has been deemed the most qualified firm to assist Bryan County with debris removal services for disaster recovery. Staff's recommendation is to proceed with the drafting and executing of a contract with DRC Emergency Services LLC for debris removal services for disaster recovery.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize staff to proceed with drafting and executing a contract with DRC Emergency Services LLC for debris removal services for disaster recovery.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Just a question for you, Lee Kevin. Any of those people that did, may have local, everything people have studied?
No, no, they were not local.
Okay, thank you.
Right, item number ten is Debris Monitoring Disaster Recovery and Emergency Planning Services Contract Award. On April fifteenth, 2025, staff issued a request for qualifications for debris monitoring services for disaster recovery. Qualification packages were due on Thursday, May twenty-second, 2025, and at that time, a total of five packages were received. The five qualification packages received were scored by a review committee, and the results are on the screen. After a thorough review of packages submitted, Goodwin Mills K. Wood received the highest score and has been deemed the most qualified firm to assist Bryan County with debris removal, debris monitoring services for disaster recovery. The recommendation is staff proceed with the drafting and executing a contract with Goodwin Mills K. Wood for debris monitoring services for disaster recovery.
Ben, these are the same folks that did this previously for us?
Yeah, and you do the research, but you gotta have monitored, so.
Perfect.
All right, need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moving, no, you go right ahead, Mr. Commissioner Floyd.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize staff to proceed with drafting and executing a contract with Goodwin Mills K. Wood for debris monitoring services for disaster recovery.
Second.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a couple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carry.
Item eleven is appointments to the Richmond Hill Bryan County Airport Authority. On May first, 2025, Governor Brian Kemp signed House Bill seven sixty-three into law, which establishes the Richmond Hill Bryan County Airport Authority. Pursuant to House Bill seven sixty-three, the Bryan County Board of Commissioners is to appoint the following three seats on the authority. Post one, which is to be held by the county administrator or his designate, post three and post five. For post one, the term of the office shall begin immediately and continue as long as the member holds the position of county administrator. Appointees to post three and five would serve a four-year term until their successors are duly appointed and qualified. County Manager Ben Taylor has agreed to serve on the board in post one. Staff recommends county, appoint County Administrator Ben Taylor to post one of the Richmond Hill Bryan County Airport Authority, with his term continuing as long as he holds the position of county administrator. Also, two additional appointments shall be made by this board to the Richmond Hill Bryan County Airport Authority for post three and post five, respectively, with terms in accordance with the local legislation.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint County Administrator Ben Taylor of the Richmond Hill, Ben Taylor of Bryan County to the Richmond Hill Bryan County Airport Authority, with his term continuing as long as he holds the position of county administrator. Also, I'd move to appoint fellow Commissioner Gene Wallace to post three, and Mr. Marvin Daniel of Richmond Hill to post five of the Richmond Hill Bryan County Airport Authority, to serve a four-year term until their successors are duly appointed and qualified.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, one opposed. Well, Dr. Wallace? Commissioner Wallace?
Should I, should I vote, since I'm one of the people?
Oh, you can't vote? Okay, okay. All right. Well, motion carries, two to one.
Well, you get to vote.
Yeah, you get to vote.
I'll vote in favor, so.
Item twelve is a contract between the Tax Commissioner, the City of Pembroke, the City of Richmond Hill, and the Bryan County, Bryan County for tax collection. Each year, the Tax Commissioner has an opportunity to negotiate an agreement with the municipalities located within Bryan County for the collection of municipal taxes and the preparation of tax digest. Pamela Gunder, the Bryan County Tax Commissioner, entered into a contract with the City of Pembroke for those purposes. That contract is in the form of an intergovernmental agreement that requires the approval of the Bryan County Board of Commissioners. Staff recommends for this item to be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and authorize the chairman to execute the agreements for tax collection and tax digest preparation in the City of Pembroke and the City of Richmond Hill as presented.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in the second, all in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carry. All right, county attorney.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So, county attorney, item number one is consideration of a resolution to accept donation of certain temporary easement rights for the Brisbane Road Rehab and Sidewalk Project. The county, in furtherance of the Brisbane Road Rehab and Sidewalk Right-of-Way Project, the county solicited donations of the necessary temporary easements from certain owners of property located on Brisbane Road. This item accepts the donation of all of the temporary driveway and construction easements needed for the project from the necessary owners on the attached Exhibit A to that resolution. This donation conveys to the county all of the required temporary driveway and construction easements that the county needs for the Brisbane Road Rehab and Sidewalk Project. And the recommendation is for this item to be approved. Happy to answer any questions, if y'all have any.
All right, any questions? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a resolution accepting the donation of a temporary easement from several owners of real property on Brisbane Road for the Brisbane Road Rehab and Sidewalk Project.
Second.
All right, we got a second. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, that was it for now. We got the public comment. If you are still here for public comment, raise your hand, and we see how many, because there's a ton of people here.
Just three.
Okay. All right, come on up. State your name, please.
Evening Commissioners, I'm Professor M. Thomas Seaman.
Good evening, Professor Seaman.
And I want to thank you guys for all the time and effort you put into making our community a better place. Just want to talk to you about an article that came out this spring. Former Long County Commissioner was arrested and charged with one thing, of one count of violation of oath of office. That caught my attention a little bit, because as employees of Bryan County and the recipient of public funds, we all take this oath of office when we're signed in to support the Constitution of the United States. And looking that up in the dictionary, "to support" means to uphold or advocate a cause or principle. So this oath that we take means we should support the whole Constitution of the United States, including the Ten Amendments, which are foundational principles of our Constitution. Now, most people I've found are familiar with the First and Second Amendments, but most people don't know the Tenth Amendment, which is also very important. It expresses the principle of federalism. It states, "The powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution, nor prohibited by it to the States, are reserved to the States respectively or to the people." According to Article One, Section Eight of the Constitution, there are only nineteen enumerated powers listed for the federal government. That's the big one. James Madison, the architect of the Constitution, wrote that "the powers of the federal government are, quote, 'few and defined,' unquote. While state powers are numerous and indefinite, they can do anything listed." For more on this, see the Federalist Papers, number forty-five and number fifty-one. I bring this up because last year, Bryan County employees failed to support the Tenth Amendment, thus breaking their oath of office. More specifically, Bryan County employees applied for a federal grant from HUD, H-U-D, an unconstitutional agency, and then this board voted to accept this money, thus failing to support the Tenth Amendment. So, that's why I'm reminding this, because it seems like we work hard, but when it comes to money, sometimes people forget to look at the Constitution. So, a reminder, to make matters even worse, our county employees, either not knowing that our federal government was thirty-six trillion dollars in debt, or not caring about it, added another one million dollars to our national debt, and that is the very definition of fiscal responsibility. So, we don't want to do that again this year either. So, the reason I came tonight is just to remind us of our oath to support the Constitution this year. My suggestion is that we all review the Constitution, particularly the Tenth Amendment. Perhaps our county lawyers can educate us from the Federalist Papers, number forty-five and number fifty-one, on the principle of federalism and limited government that many in America seem to be ignorant of. So, thank you for listening. We need to be more diligent this year in upholding and supporting our great Constitution and its fundamental principle of federalism. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, Professor. Professor, could I ask you one question? Are you a professor of constitutional law?
No, I'm a professor of history.
Oh, very good, okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just a concerned citizen.
No, understood, very well said. Thank you very much.
All right, next. I don't have a name.
Young lady over here.
Okay, come on up. Ma'am? If you just states your name, please.
Hi, my name is Mary McConich Beasley, and I'm here to talk just a short moment about the proposed airport and how you're selecting people. I have over thirty years of air traffic control experience. I've worked at Savannah Airport since nineteen ninety-five, so I know their airspace. And I know when you're building an airport, you look at the land, you look at the concrete that you're building, but the part that you all seem to forget is what's in the air. And that's where I come in to educate you. I personally have emailed each one of you. I would love to spend time with you, because this is not something I could talk about in front of everybody, because you're the ones that have to make the decision, and I would like to educate you, and I will be available at any point, but I wanted to come and talk to you personally and say, "I'm available, I can educate you to make the right decision," even though this is not a done decision, and just educate you on basically what's in the air, because everybody's looking at the ground, looking at the hangars. No, you gotta look up. You gotta look at the military operating areas, you gotta look at the, I would say, the red flag areas of our airspace. And I have the experience and the knowledge that I would love to share with you, and you guys can make a very good informed decision whether this is good or not, for basically the taxpayer dollars. It's just, it counts for everybody, and a lot of people aren't educated in this area, and I will gladly share my expertise with all of you.
Certainly, and thank you so much. And let me just say, we would, we would welcome any conversation, you know, to be had with anybody in the community that's interested. You know, this body was asked to appoint an airport authority. That's going to be an eleven-member board. Some of those people may have that level of experience, you know, with aircraft and aircraft operations, but certainly any input from the public and any concerned citizen would be welcome to that group.
Yes.
And I look forward to, you know, enabling that group to have a little more conversation back and forth with the public as the information regarding the airport becomes available to us all, so.
Yes, it's just a different viewpoint that you guys haven't addressed yet, and I could help you in that. I'm also a pilot, so I also have that viewpoint, so.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
What's your, what's your name again?
Mary McConich Beasley.
So, the airport's not a guarantee, anyway?
Correct. I just want to be, I've been trying to educate people in the community every time I talk to somebody about it, and I just want to, you have to be, I'm all about safety, and I don't want you guys to, you know, be in the news, basically. You need to be educated when you guys make the decision where you're going to put it, and what all the factors are included.
Oh, very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Gentlemen, thank y'all for what you do. My name's Lance Warren. Just a little concern about item number seven that was brought up, which is the inmate work detail. It was stated that there would be one correctional officer for every ten inmates, I believe is what it said. I've been in law enforcement since two thousand and three. This would bring a concern. Based on my training and experience, a former full-time law enforcement, now as a reserve deputy, potentially being a concern for just that one, one officer having those ten inmates with him, and not knowing where backup may come from, or anything like that, so I would just ask that that be considered.
Yes, sir, I'll speak to Ms. Downs about that, too, and appreciate you bringing that to our attention. to our attention.
I'm sure y'all have thought about it, but thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lance. Does the sheriff, is there like a, does the sheriff know where the work detail is going to be from day to day? Is that ever communicated as a backup question?
What does President Carrick on the state contract?
Right.
Do we have to provide band and be transported and they come from the state facility? County's had this contract with the state for several years.
Yes.
I say several before my time, maybe even like twenty years, never did. The service was made bad. It's not a common service.
Right.
Where cities and counties did it with Pembroke outside.
Pembroke, it was easy because the chief always knew where they were, but, you know, bigger.
But we can take a look at that and maybe it's an application for the market.
All right. Any more Commissioner comments?
Yes, sir.
I entertain a motion for executive session for real estate.
And litigation.
And litigation.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of discussing real estate and litigation.
Second.
Second.
Second, all right, all right, motion to second.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.